Welcome back to the Conservative Cat Show. I so do appreciate you being here this morning. We've got so much to cover, so I'm just gonna jump right in if that's all right by you. Go ahead and subscribe to the channel if you're here and share this out with your friends. Tell them to subscribe. Should share it out to one friend today. Tell one friend about Conservative Cat. What we do, we cover the truth. We cover Illinois state politics. We also cover things nationally. I am going to be starting today's show with this NGO in California. Now, they have their claws in, you know, nationally, everywhere. But this NGO was linked to funding LA's anti ICE riots. You remember those where President Donald Trump had descended in the National Guard to Los Angeles to try to restore the calm there in LA after days of violent riots and violent protests directed at federal immigration officers broke out. So you guys remember those protests and you guys remember the protest, no King's Day or whatever the hell it was. That was all backed and paid for by leftist billionaires like George Soros and leftist organizations. Now, I'm looking at this NGO and Red State has a piece on this and I highly recommend you go check it out. But they have a connection with a California redistricting organization. Now, you know California Governor Gavin Newsom and Illinois Governor JB Pritzker, they've kind of threatened that they are going to retaliate against Texas Republicans for redistricting, possibly claiming those five seats, you know, down in Texas for the 2026 election. And this NGO has really interesting connections to this California redistricting organization. So we're gonna be talking, and this is the same organization that has tie or was funding the anti ICE riots that were going on in LA. I do also want to talk about this, you know, these silly bills that people get passed. Dave Kaler, he put it up on his social media. I dug into it and I'm like, this is a really gay bill. Like, you know, if you are new to the show, I say gay, like 2012 gay. It's really sad that I can't say that anymore without people like screaming at the sky. It's gay, stupid. This bill, the bill, what it does, it pays, like it's a bill for three people. Why, one, number one, why the hell would you create a bill that affects like three people? Okay, number one. Number two, we're paying students to sit on higher education boards. And meanwhile, you've got the, and today's show is all about the Illinois Board of Education lowering their proficiency standards for math and English because it's abysmal. I mean, only like less than 35% of kids can read at grade level or do math at grade level. It's even less for math. So we've got the classrooms collapsing. And then at the same time, Dave Kaler thinks it's a smart idea, brilliant idea to go out there and start paying students to sit on higher education boards. So I think it's gay and dumb and I can't believe that this thing exists. Okay? And then we're gonna take a look at the rigged maps here in the state of Illinois. Kind of connects to the California redistricting because they're, they're coming out with this new, and I'm very skeptical of it because it's Bill Daley who worked with the Obama administration, okay? And Ray LaHood, a Rhino, like known Rhino. So, you know, the intention is there. It's a commission and they want to form a commission and take a look, not at the congressional maps, which are actually in jeopardy right now because of Governor JB Pritzker's threats. You know, with Texas, they're looking at the congressional maps. It's a mid decade redistricting that they're doing there in Texas, which they're gonna gain five seats. And we really want to hold Congress in 2026, right? We have the House and Senate. We want to make sure that we hold Congress. And that's what this whole redistricting is all about. Really, it's about evening the ballot or creating a fair balance here, what Texas is doing. And I think Florida is gonna wind up doing it too, where they start to carve out Democrat districts and make them Republican districts. That's what Texas is doing. Blue states have done it for decades, for years, states like Illinois, California, New York. They've done it for years. So now Texas said enough's enough. We're going to do it ourselves. Red states are jumping on the gerrymandering bandwagon. So I think that that's the only way to even scales here. So we've got some Illinois politicians or Bill Daley and Ray LaHood. They want to create this commission and they've got to do it via ballot initiative and they gotta get signatures for it. And I can't help but feel that this is, and they're not even looking at the congressional maps, by the way, which are the ones that are in jeopardy and like the most at risk right now because of the threats, because of what Texas is doing and Florida possibly doing. But this, this commission isn't even gonna look at that. It's, it's going to look at the state districts. Okay? So those are your state reps, your state senators. And I can't help but feel that perhaps they created this because Tony McComme, just 10 days ago, it was announced that she has a primary challenger. A lot of these Rhino Republicans in the state house are going to be challenged via primary this year because there's this new PAC out there. And I'll get into it. It's kind of spearheaded by Tom DeVore. He's an attorney and a conservative activist. But this has been going on for a while before the Political Action Committee was even started. I mean, really, since Darren Bailey entered his race, his gubernatorial race, there have been more and more grassroots conservatives primaring these Rhino Republicans in the state house. Okay? And they're starting to get freaked out about it. And not only that, and this is why I think Bill Daley's involved now, you're starting to see state house Democrats get primaried, specifically in the Chicago districts, because there's, because of the education crisis, because the kids can't read or do math, a lot of these like moms are stepping up, like the Moms for Liberty crowd, a lot of these like kind of apolitical people are stepping into Democrat races. I know of an individual, she ran in a primary against Patrick Joyce, who's been there like literally since I've been alive practically. Patrick Joyce, he is such a corrupt Senator, in my opinion. He serves like my hometown where I'm from in that district. And everybody you talk to, they think, oh yeah, no, he's not for like transing the kids or anything like that. And he's not for, the guy voted to put tampons in little boys bathrooms. Okay? So like, he's an extreme Democrat and all the farmers in this community, I'm from a farm town, Brightwood, Illinois, Custer Park, Illinois, and he represents like Essex there, which is right next to Custer Park. And everybody thinks that he's like a chill guy. And I'm like thinking to myself, no, this guy's really extreme. So somebody actually primaried him. And this was just a grassroots candidate. And she entered the race really because a lot of these farming rural communities, they have a real big problem. Her daughter tragically overdosed. Okay? And she, there's a story about her out there. So she, you know, was very open and honest about that on the campaign and said like, hey, this is why I'm running because this is really affecting our district, the fentanyl, the opioid crisis. It's getting into our rural communities and it's really affecting our, it's a poor, you know, neighborhood. It's a poor district. You know, and people who don't, you know, live in ritzy houses. It's not like Naperville, right? It's not a suburb. It's a farm town, rural and the heroin and the overdoses. I mean, I could, I couldn't even count on my hands how many people I went to school with who died of an overdose. Like, that's how bad it is in my town. And she ran to fight that issue. And she's just a grassroots, a political person. And she ran a Democrat primary in a Democrat primary, I believe in, what was it, 2022 already, 2024? No, yeah, 2022, I think it was. And she ran in the Democrat primary against Patrick Joyce. So what's going on here is I think that LaHood and Bill Daley, they're creating this commission. And I'm gonna get to it about the redistricting because they're freaking out about the establishment being challenged. By establishment, I mean the super minority, which is the Rhinos. And then you have the Democrats. And they're, they're being challenged via primaries now, which is also why I've talked about this bill before. It was a couple of years ago. They're starting to see this trend and they're freaking out. They're trying to fight this every which direction. Grassroots people primaring these establishment type state house representatives and senators. Back a couple of years ago, there was bill, it was House Bill 4488. And it used to be where Illinois Democrats, Illinois Republican Party, they weren't able to contribute an unlimited amount during the primary season. They used to be able to do it just in the general, but now they can do it in the primary and the general because of this bill. It was an election nominee, this bill. So they clearly are freaking out about primaries. And then they tried to go after slated candidates, which was shocking because typically your local GOP or your local even Democrat Party will slate candidates. It happens more so on the GOP side of things because, you know, in the Chicago districts where these Democrats have strongholds, you don't need to slate a candidate. A lot of what was going on where these local GOPs were slating candidates against the stronghold Democrat districts. Okay? So they weren't running in primaries, but later were slated. Why? Because, you know, it's hard to win like a primary there in these Chicago districts. And they would just slate these candidates in. And the Democrats had a real big issue with that, which I'm not like crazy about slating candidates. But it's clear that people are freaking out that the grassroots in Illinois are starting to wake up and they're starting to challenge the establishment. All right. So sorry, I opened with that. I haven't even gotten to today's stories. But that is going to be the third story we hit. The rigged maps, rigged state, how Illinois politicians pick voters instead. They pick their voters instead of voters picking them. So we're gonna be chatting a little bit about that. Now, I do want to start here. This is a national story, kind of. This is a nonprofit organization that has its claws nationally, everywhere. But specifically in LA. So President Donald Trump, of course, he was forced to send the National Guard to LA to restore calm after days and days and days of violent riots and protests that were directed at federal immigration officers. You guys remember this. In June, the violence started. And really, it started after this event happened. Her name is Angelika Salis. Okay? Now, write that down. She's the executive director of the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights. And I'm just gonna call it Chirla. Okay? This is the nonprofit organization. She's an executive director of. And she held a press conference. So the LA riots really started to happen after this press conference where she was screaming, crying about the arrest of SEIU head David Herta, David Herta. And he had assaulted ICE agents and he was arrested. Okay? And he was assaulting these ICE agents for performing their law enforcement duties and law enforcement activities. And, you know, at this press conference with this woman dead, who's the executive director of this Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights, what she did was call for more demonstrations against ICE. At the podium, Angelika, she was flanked. So to her right, to her left, she had LA City Council members. She also had a California State Assemblyman. She had a California State Senator and other elected officials, all of whom were Democrats, right beside her in this press conference. So hundreds of protesters, you know, after this press conference turned into thousands. And then, before long, they had matching T-shirts, they had signs, they had water bottles, they had food. So this began to show everybody across the nation. We saw all the videos of the masks being shipped in via the boxes. Everybody, the gas masks, right? We all started to realize like, oh, this is organized and there is some involvement of organizations with some degree of funding behind them involved at this point. Okay? So this is a piece out of Red State. I encourage you to go check it out. Red State, they actually identified that Chirla, the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights, Chirla and the Party for Socialism Liberation, socialism and liberation, wow. They were the two main non-government organizations kind of creating the violence in LA. Okay? So when they took a look at Chirla's financials, it was revealed that state taxpayers and federal taxpayers, they were funding the lion's share of Chirla's activities. So you take a look at their financials, you're like, whoa, they're backed by taxpayer dollars. So all of these riots, we know this, were backed by taxpayer dollars. It's really hard to track down the financials of nonprofit organizations because there is not a reporting standard. This is something I run into all the time. They have to report how much of their contributions actually come from taxpayers and how much actually comes from donations, which is why NPR, PPS, all of that is like really nasty. Like, we know that they give, you know, a certain amount from the government via grants. But they don't disclose exactly how much they're getting from the government on their tax forms and exactly how much they're getting via donations. It's all kind of lumped into one big public contributions or public money. And it's all kind of lumped into one big kitty. And you can't really separate, hey, how much of that is taxpayer money? How much taxpayer money? How much of that is donations? So nonprofit organizations, I say, eh, get rid of them. They're actually the antithesis to what the church is really supposed to be. For example, your Boys and Girls Clubs, this is like an after school club where young kids get together and I don't know, they play games and have fellowship together. Really, what should be going on is our churches do that kind of stuff. Okay? Youth groups and things like that. So there's really no reason for a lot of these nonprofit organizations. All of their missions can be done via the church. And really what it is, it is undermining the mission of the church, all of these various nonprofits that pop up. So that's my position on nonprofits. They shouldn't even be a thing. Okay? I think that there's just too much wiggle room for nefarious activity, especially the way they report. And they're, they're tax exempt. Okay? So Chirla is the head of this particular operation that we're talking about today. They also have their tentacles in many other organizations. So we're gonna, gonna kind of break this down. So the tentacles of both the organization itself and its head, Angelika Salis, who I've talked about, they have spread far and wide in California and they've spread their tentacles nationally through various nonprofits. I do want to play this clip. You guys are gonna get a kick out of this. The Red State managing editor was on with Fox News and they talk about Angelika and this specific organization called Chirla and how they were a part of the LA riots and how they were funding them. Take a listen. Here we go.
...about protests here in Los Angeles. When Donald Trump sought blanket
Oh, this is the wrong clip. I am sorry. I've never done that before, actually. Let me try to pull up the right clip because that was a really cool interview and I want you guys to see it. But Red State has done an investigation and they've revealed that several left wing organizations, some Soros funded, non-GOS, they have found that Salis, so this Angelika Salis woman, she is actually running, or she is a board member of various NGOs that are connected to George Soros or other left wing billionaires. And the group's ties, now, we're figuring this out, the group has ties to, hold on one second. I think that this is it. I'm looking, I'm looking. I want to pull up this. Maybe this is the right clip. I thought that this was the wrong clip, but maybe it's the right one. Let's play it for a little bit and then we'll see. Sorry, guys. This is in real time. Let's see. Okay, yep.
...in Los Angeles. When Donald Trump sought blanket authority to commandeer the National Guard, he made that order apply to every state in this nation. California may be first, but it clearly will not end here. Other states are next. Democracy is next. Democracy is under assault before our eyes.
Let's bring in Red State managing editor Jennifer Van Laar and Fox 11 news anchor Alex Michelson. Thank you both for coming on. Alex, I mean, one, we talked about this thing, the audio feed, Trump, I mean Gavin Newsom had a little trouble tonight. It was a state product. This is state producing, not, not any media involved here. He was fired up about Trump. He was fired up about Trump when he spoke to you exclusively. And he said the following about civil war.
We'll hold up everybody to a higher level of accountability, but that's not what Trump is after. He's not for peacemaking. He's here for war. He wants a civil war on the streets of America, not just here. He's testing the boundaries by nationalizing the federal guard.
Seems dramatic. He was also on the dictator thing a couple of times tonight on Trump.
Yeah. And President Trump was asked about that specific comment by Peter Doocy at the White House yesterday. The president saying, I'm not for civil war. That's not what I'm looking to do. But Newsom is clearly trying to frame this as a mano a mano match between him and Trump, which has political benefits for both. It seems like it's good for Donald Trump to make it about fighting Gavin Newsom. And it seems like it's good for Gavin Newsom to make it about fighting Donald Trump. The problem has been for the last few days, it hasn't really been good for the people of Los Angeles who have seen what we've seen in the streets. Finally, it seems like tonight, we're starting to get some control.
Yeah, it's interesting. You write about how, you know, taxes, like taxpayer dollars may be funding these riots, Jennifer. It's interesting. You write the following here. Hundreds of protesters turned into thousands of rioters before long, complete with matching T-shirts, professionally printed signs signaling the involvement of organizations with some degree of funding behind them, as data Republican found Chirla Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights and the Party for Socialism and Liberation are two of the non-governmental organizations implicated in this ongoing riot. You go on to say that 96% of Chirla funding is from the state of California. At least it was at the end of 2023, the last time that that numbers are available.
That's right. And a lot of that was through California Department of Social Services for migrant services. But in looking at their budget, only $285,000 went to migrant services, another $7 million or so to legal services, and then a bunch, millions and millions to community outreach, organizing, management. So I don't really see a whole lot going to legitimate migrant assistance there and all of the organizing monies, you know, where, what does that mean with organizing?
Well, yeah, we, maybe we could see some of that on the screen right now. Meantime, you ask Gavin Newsom, where we go from here? And he said the following.
How do we get things to calm down? How do we get the streets at this point to be safe? Donald Trump needs to rescind his order, period. And then we need to go back to a process where we peacefully protest, where law enforcement peacefully organizes safe, safe parameters of engagement.
He's poking the bear, Alex, because, you know, you had Trump administration today saying, look, we saved California. It's all peaceful. It's all good because we saved it. It'd be, it would burn to the ground if I didn't do what I did, Trump says.
And of course, Newsom says that that's kind of ridiculous. And if you look at what the, I mean, let's be real, the real work tonight has been done by the LAPD.
Of course.
And, and the LAPD tonight seemed to have the approach of, let's do something about this.
Right.
Last night, the LAPD seemed to have the approach of, let's let a lot of this stuff stand. We had images of people taking hammers to the streets and lighting cars on fire and all the rest of that, which President Trump talked about today and saw, and he was kind of outraged by. And today, it's a very different approach. So that is a political strategy and a law enforcement strategy, but led by a lot of politicians who have clearly chosen to take a different approach now.
Yeah. And it's interesting because the truth of the matter is, is that you have this, this thing where the police chief in LA said, we're overwhelmed coming on Saturday night. We're overwhelmed. And then you have the federal government saying, maybe they need some help.
Yeah. And so the National Guard so far has really been focused on guarding a lot of these federal buildings, which they've done a good job of and which were under attack before.
That's right.
But some of the most heavy duty police work has been done by the local law.
Very quickly, Jennifer, you write, basically, our taxpayer dollars are going to train high school and college students in how to break immigration law and become Marxist agitators. I've got 30 seconds for you. Is that what you found?
That is what I found because a lot of Chirla's programs have to do with things on college campuses, high school campuses. And then their rapid response network for ICE raids is outing where these raids are happening.
Yeah, it's, it really is something we are learning every day. Jennifer, Alex, thank you.
Okay. So I'm glad that I got to share that with you. That was, you know, Red State, I really want you to hear the managing editor talk about their investigation into Chirla because that's kind of where I'm headed this morning. If you're just joining, go ahead, smash that like button, share this out and subscribe to the channel. So Chirla, they now have this connection. And I'm really concerned about California and Illinois. Possibly, they are going to try to launch this redistricting commission in retaliation to what Texas is doing. Right? So Red State investigated and they revealed that several other leftist organizations, some Soros funded NGOs, that Angelika Salis, now that is the woman who is the executive director of Chirla, either runs, so she either runs or serves as a board member on several other organizations. And this kind of stuff goes on in Illinois all the time. I told you, when I go to the state house and when I was doing the reporting there, I would see people get new T-shirts out of their car, like for various organizations. So it was the same people every single day, just like a different organization. So they're getting paid by various nonprofit organizations or non-government organizations via taxpayer dollars to be there in the lobby, their legislators, they're getting paid with taxpayer dollars to go do it. And they're getting paid from various channels. So now Chirla has a tie with California Citizens Redistricting Commission. Okay? And Chirla actually served as a polling place in 2022 in the 2024 elections. Okay? So now you're starting to see what's going to happen here. Chirla, this is an immigrant nonprofit organization, immigrant nonprofit organization. Are they going to be redistricting? So the question is, are they going to be redistricting to include illegal immigrants that flooded over the border in some of these illegal immigrant communities? Are they going to be redistricting to include them? And are they going to be voting in our elections this go around? These are all questions that I have. I do want to talk about this woman, Angelika. So the CA, California Racial Equity Commission. Okay? So she, in 2022,
Very quickly, Jennifer, you write, "Basically, our taxpayer dollars are going to train high school and college students in how to break immigration law and become Marxist agitators." I've got 30 seconds for you. Is that what you found?
That is what I found, because a lot of Chirla's, uh, programs have to do with things on college campuses, high school campuses, and then their rapid response network for ICE raids is, is outing where these raids are happening.
Yeah, it, it's, it really is. Something we are learning every day. Jennifer, Alex, thank you both.
Okay, so, I'm glad that I got to share that with you. That was, you know, Red State, I really want you to, to hear the managing editor talk about their investigation into Chirla, because that's kind of where I'm headed this morning. If you're just joining, go ahead, smash that like button, share this out, and subscribe to the channel. So Chirla, they now have this connection, and I'm really concerned about California and Illinois. Possibly, they are going to try to launch this redistricting commission in retaliation to what Texas is doing, right? So Red State investigated and they revealed that several other leftist organizations, some Soros-funded, NGOs that Angelica Salas, now that is the woman who is the executive director of Chirla, either runs, so she either runs or serves as a board member on several other organizations. And this kind of stuff goes on in Illinois all the time. I told you, when I go to the State House and when I was doing the reporting there, I would see people get new t-shirts out of their car, like for various organizations. So it was the same people every single day, just like a different organization. So they're getting paid by various, uh, nonprofit organizations or non-government organizations via taxpayer dollars to be there and to lobby their, their legislators. They're getting paid with taxpayer dollars to go do it, and they're getting paid from various channels. So now, Chirla has a tie with California Citizens Redistricting Commission. Okay, and Chirla actually served as a polling place in 2022 in the 2024 elections. Okay, so now you're starting to see what's going to happen here. Chirla, this is an immigrant nonprofit organization, immigrant, uh, nonprofit organization. Are they going to be redistricting? So the question is, are they going to be redistricting to include illegal immigrants that flooded over the border in some of these illegal, illegal immigrant communities? Are they going to be redistricting to include them? Uh, and are they going to be voting in our elections this go around? These are all questions that I have. Uh, I do want to talk about this woman, Angelica. So the CA California Racial Equity Commission, okay? So she, in 2023, right at the time of Chirla, when Chirla state funding ballooned, okay? They got a ton of state funding, like 96% of their funding came from the government. That's when it was last reported. Like I said, nonprofit organizations since then really aren't, uh, reporting how much of their money is taxpayer money and how much of it is coming from contributions. So there's not really a whole lot of recent numbers, but in 2023, we know that, uh, Chirla state funding ballooned. Then, uh, CA Assembly Speaker, the, the House Speaker there, Anthony Rendon, he appointed Salas Angelica to a newly-formed California Racial Equity Commission. This is a state government entity. Okay, so this isn't a nonprofit organization she's part of. This is a state government entity. And this is interesting and a coincidence, uh, what a coincidence, interestingly. Uh, the commission was formed via executive order from Newsom after a bill to establish the group died in the assembly in 2022. So you see what's going on here. They like create these positions for their buddies, um, state agencies for their buddies, state commissions for their buddies, and then they give them a pretty much pat on the back or like, hey, a, a dada boy, for, you know, hey, thanks in 2023, we appreciate, um, yeah, everything that you did with the state money to further Democrat leftist causes, uh, by funneling it into various organizations through this Chirla group. We appreciate what you did. Here is a spot on our newly-formed Racial Equity State Government Entity Commission, okay? Uh, that's what that looks like, okay? Now I want to go to the California Wellness Foundation. Okay, so this woman, we're talking about Angelica here in California. She was a board member of the California Wellness Foundation, a nonprofit formed in 1992 when Health Net, the state's largest insurer, converted from nonprofit to a for-profit status. California Wellness Foundation has morphed from its original mission in 1992 to become a social justice and advocacy group, okay? So even if these nonprofits, they might start out as, uh, oh, that's a nice cause, that sounds like, you know, a great mission. They ultimately morph into Democrat causes and leftist causes and advocacy and political advocacy groups, okay? So here's what was said in 1991 about the group, uh, and how it would be formed and what it would be like. Like I said, it was formed in 1992. Here's what it was said, what it was gonna be, okay? The California Wellness Foundation. "The foundation will be governed by a board of trustees, all of whom who have medical and professional healthcare backgrounds. The board will disperse funds through grant process." Okay, so they get taxpayer money through grant process, and then they're gonna disperse that out to community health centers and health-related organizations to focus on illness prevention, children's healthcare, and prenatal care. Wow, that sounds so great. So for example, the California Wellness Foundation, what they would do is get taxpayer dollars and perhaps maybe take it and spend some of the taxpayer dollars or dis- uh, disperse it out to, say, a Pregnancy Resource Center, right? That sounds, um, kind of like a nice mission. It, it's very fuzzy. Okay, now, you fast forward to today, from 1992, what it was originally established to be. Uh, there are 14 board members, so rather than seven, there are 14, it's doubled, many of whom have zero, uh, background in medicine, professional healthcare. Uh, the grants, uh, to community health centers focusing on illness prevention, uh, children's healthcare, prenatal care. Uh, only a portion of their millions that they hand out every year go to those organizations, okay? Go to actual healthcare organizations that are doing illness prevention or children's healthcare, specializing in that. Uh, so basically, this is just another layer. So only a little portion of that goes to that organization, or to those types of organizations. The rest of it, probably going to fund agitators, fund their political activism, the leftist activism. And I want to, uh, go now to this one. There are several here, and we're just gonna dig into each and every one of these, because I think that this is so important. So you see how the money is, is used, your taxpayer dollars are used, and how it is used to continue the Democrats' power in the state of California, and how they will always be a blue state, and how they continue to remain in power. They do it through these various, like, nonprofit organizations with these fuzzy little causes, okay? Uh, here's another one, Power California Action. Angelica, you know, she, she's got a lot of hats, right? She's the chair of this Power Action, um, or Power California Action. Really what this used to be, it was formerly known as Mobilize the Immigrant Vote Action Fund. Uh, so they say that they have registered and pre-registered over 100,000 voters, okay? The group receives funding from George Soros Open Societies Foundation. So this is yet another arm of their political activism, uh, where they're going out and they're getting the vote, okay? And a lot of these nonprofit organizations, right, are getting taxpayer funny, uh, monies, and they are using this money to remain in power for agitating, for protests, for getting out the vote efforts. I mean, i- it's so clear, it's clear as day, what they're doing. LA Alliance for New Economy, for a New Economy. Angelica Salas, she also serves as the board of directors. So there's so many people like Angelica in Illinois who serve on various nonprofit organizations, and then through these nonprofit organizations, they do, uh, the Democrats' bidding. So she serves as the board of directors for this one, and, um, this is the LA Alliance for a New Economy, which is essentially upfront for organized labor, okay? So they work with the IBW Local 18, uh, the LA Teachers Union, various other unions. And I want you to remember the arrest of this SEIU president, David Herta. Uh, that is what kind of sparked all the LA riots, the thousands of people showing up and being very violent, throwing rocks at cars, uh, you know, Molotov cocktails, right, throwing those. The arrest of that guy, um, for interfering with federal immigration enforcement activities. That's what sparked all of that, and Angelica's comrades and her to kind of use that as an excuse to call for violent uprisings in LA. Okay, so they've got their little mitts in everything, okay? She, she's got her mittens in everything. She's got it in get-out-the-vote efforts. She's got it in the workforce, um, these unions, okay? Which are organized labor fronts, essentially, uh, these organizations. So, um, she's also a part of this Groundswell Action Fund, okay? She is the Liberation Fund Advisor for the Groundswell Action Fund. This is a nonprofit with both a C3 and a C4, uh, branch. So a lot of these nonprofit organizations, they have like the mission, uh, which is the C3, and then the C4 is the political advocacy or advocacy arm. Uh, so their mission, Groundswell Fund strengthens the US movements for reproductive and social justice by resourcing intersectional grassroots organizing and countering, or and centering the leadership of women of color. I don't even, I don't even fricking understand what a fricking word salad that is. I don't even know what they do, particularly those who are Black, Indigenous, and transgender. So they receive, um, uh, 5.9 million from the Soros Open Society Foundation, uh, since its inception in 2017. Okay, this organization. What I'd imagine they do is just get out, like, uh, the vote efforts or social justice activism. They just go out and campaign on behalf of, uh, ballot initiatives, reproductive health, like, so I'd imagine, like, there's abortion initiatives and ballot initiatives, you know, on, on the ballot. Pertaining to abortion, I'd imagine these women of color, these women in leadership roles, Black and Indigenous women and transgender women, or transgender ballot initiatives, they go out and they try to get out the vote for those ballot initiatives. That's what I'd imagine they're doing with the 5.9 million dollars from the Soros Open Societies Foundations. Okay, there's another one. We're almost to the California Citizens Redistricting, so stay with me. Unite LA. This is so important, okay, that we go through these, so you can see, this is just one woman in California and how many tentacles she has in all of these forms of political advocacy. So Unite LA, uh, this is a public-private partnership, uh, for which Salas, Angelica Salas, serves as a board member and a board secretary. Okay, so she has her clause in this one, too. The group claims that its mission is to break through traditional, uh, silos, to refocus and reimagine our education system and put students first and achieve improved outcomes for LA's underserved students. Uh, putting students first, what a novel concept. But the organization does, you know, more of the same of what they've done with these previous organizations that I've talked about, Marxism. Uh, but here, they are infiltrating the schools, indoctrinating the students, and creating malleable, uh, Marxist foot soldiers, essentially. So they're getting them while they're young. Uh, so every facet of political activism they are in, whether it's get-out-the-vote efforts, whether it's in the schools, whether it's in the unions, uh, the workforce. I want to get to, uh, voting. So in 2022 and 2024, uh, Chirla participated in a LA County Flex Vote Center program, okay? Meaning, the LA County election officials set up an official voting machine at Chirla's headquarters for one day during early voting. Uh, conflict of interest much, right? These are obviously all Democrat causes. You know, reproductive rights, abortion, uh, you've got, uh, Power CA. This is a get-out-the-vote effort for illegal, or for immigrants. So, um, having a voting machine headquartered at Chirla, which is another immigrant, um, organization. This is clearly biased. Um, in 2022 and in 2024, they participated in this Flex Vote Center program. So according to the LA County Registrar, uh, the Flex Vote Center program began in 2020 when the county implemented the Voting Solutions for All People Voting System. The objective of this program is to meet hard-to-reach voters and bring them to vote and bring voting to them. Uh, the communities that the Flex Vote Center program prioritizes are senior living facilities, people experiencing homelessness, voters with disabilities, geographically isolated voters, okay? None of these communities are communities that Chirla serves, by the way, because they serve illegal, or illegal immigrants. They serve illegal aliens and get them representation via legal services, uh, and they shouldn't be voting anyway. So why the hell was Chirla chosen, uh, to be a part of this Flex Vote program? Okay, so after Red State story, after, um, they did a story on Chirla and their participation and funding of the LA, of the anti-L, or anti-ICE riots in LA, um, and Data Republican did some work on it as well. Federal, uh, investigations have been launched, and they were now announced into Chirla's funding. So they're looking into Chirla's funding, because this, it should be totally illegal. You can't use taxpayer dollars to go out and, um, campaign, okay? For, uh, X cause or X candidate. You can't use taxpayer dollars to incite riots or prohibit law enforcement from doing their duties, okay? This should all be illegal. So there have been federal investigations launched. They were announced by mid-July, Los Angeles Mayor Karen Bass announced a plan to distribute cash cards to illegal aliens in the city who were staying home from work and feared that they were going to be swept out, uh, by ICE, okay, by an immigration raid. So she's been giving out cash cards, um, to these illegal immigrants. Now, these Angelino cards, is what they're called, uh, would not be funded by taxpayer ca- cash, but rather philanthropic groups. Okay, philanthropic partners, that's what she said. Uh, because that would be very controversial if you're just straight up giving cash cards to illegal immigrants via taxpayer dollars. That would obviously be very, very controversial. Uh, so she said, "No, they're actually gonna be totally funded by our philanthropic partners and distributed, uh, by immigrants' rights groups such as Chirla, the Coalition for Human Immigration Rights, uh, of Los Angeles," okay? So get this, uh, representative, no, he's a representative in California, state rep, uh, Kevin Kiley, who introduced a bill that would make it, uh, where NGOs involved in organizing in unlawful riots would be ineligible to receive, um, federal funding. They'd be ineligible for federal funding and a tax-exempt status. He pointed out that Chirla has received $34 million in taxpayer funding. And taxpayer, so this taxpayer funding, uh, at least some of it, has got to be going to the Angelino cards that I was talking about. So let's take a listen here. This is, uh, Kevin Kiley. He's a Republican in California. Uh, here we go.
...is somewhat consistent with California's overall policy. We have in our state by far the most generous benefits, uh, for illegal immigrants. Gavin Newsom, for example, has pretty much driven Medicaid, uh, bankrupt or insolvent in California by getting free coverage, uh, to those who are here illegally. Uh, but this is like just a next level thing. When you saw this, you, I, I thought, man, is this like the Babylon Bee, is this a beat-up headline? But it's actually true. Karen Bass has decided, uh, that she's gonna distribute cash cards to those who are quote-unquote "affected," uh, by ICE. And by the way, one of the ways you can be affected is if you're too afraid to go into work. Well, uh, if you tell people you get free cash if you're too afraid to go to work, I think you might start seeing more people who are suddenly, uh, too afraid to go into work. And then, to top it all off, the group that she's tapped to hand out these cards is Chirla, who you'll probably remember, is this so-called nonprofit. They got $34 million in taxpayer funding, and then played an absolutely central role, uh, in the riots by telling people where ICE was at any given time using their Signal hotline. So it's just, you absolutely can't make this stuff.
Unreal.
Okay, so, yeah, at least some of these cards, like, these cards have got to be at least somewhat, uh, taxpayer-funded. Now that brings me to today's story, okay? So that was a lot of background today. I want to talk about how, uh, last week, Governor JP, or JB, Freudian slip, Gavin Newsom, he rallied, uh, a conference, a press conference together, and he announced, uh, his Election Rigging Response Act, okay? This was last week, and this is a plan to really sidestep, sidestep California's constitution and the will of the voters to implement a politically motivated gerrymandering of the state's congressional maps for use in, uh, the elections of 2026, 2028, and 2030. Okay, so this is in response, obviously, to what's going on in Texas, going down, going on down in Texas. And he is, you know, launching this politically motivated gerrymandering initiative called the Election Rigging Response Act, okay? And this is really sidestepping, like, Texas was able to do this via their constitution. They were able to, uh, call a special session. They were able to, as long as they get a majority of people to vote on these maps, it's fine. Uh, California's constitution, he's really sidestepping it, and he's sidestepping the will of the voters with this Election Rigging Response Act, okay? Now get this, Angelica, the woman we talked about for pretty much an hour today. Uh, she was in the audience here at this press conference, and the first speaker was Sarah Sedwani, okay? And she is a member of the California Citizens Redistricting Commission, okay? And, um, of course, she gave a very partisan speech at this press conference. Um, here's a bit of what she said, quote, "These are extraordinary times, and extraordinary times call for extraordinary measures. We have witnessed masked gunmen kidnapping our neighbors off of the streets, and my understanding is they're waiting outside, or they're outside waiting to do it again. Uh, they have seen not just a toleration, we have seen not just a toleration of political violence, but an encouragement of it on January 6th, uh, against nonpartisan election officials, uh, the deployment of the National Guard in our cities, turning our cities into police states. And if that wasn't enough, we are watching the executive overreach, there's no doubt, making our father, uh, founding fathers turn in their graves. And with, uh, and we have to take action. These are hallmarks of our democracy in peril." So this is what she said at the press conference, okay? Uh, tired, boring, more Democrat crap, okay? So she is a part of, like I said, the CA Citizens Redistricting Commission, and she says, "Our, our democracy is in peril." This is Sedwani, okay? Now get this, it gets crazier. She started her book, or her political career in leftist activism, uh, right out of college, and guess what group she was a part of? Chirla! Yes, you guessed it, Chirla. She was the federal policy director. And I guess Sedwani and- the federal policy director. And I guess Sedwani and this Salas woman, the Angelica Salas woman, they have stayed in touch over the years, speaking on panels together, working collaboratively on behalf of marginalized communities. Applicants for the commission can attach three letters of recommendation to their application. The first letter of recommendation on Sedwani's application for the California Citizens Redistricting Commission, guess who this was from? This was from Salas, okay, who stated, quote, "Dr. Sedwani demonstrated a well-developed ability to synthesize and communicate complex law and policy in a way that made it accessible to the broader public, for broader public conception or consumption. A skill set that will enhance her role as part of the commission set out to redraw the state's districts. Also during her tenure, she led Chirla's advocacy efforts on a national scale, collaborating with national policy experts to review and develop legislative proposals." So Professor Sedwani moved on from Chirla. She also worked at Asian Americans Advancing Justice, where she worked with communities across the state to mobilize a statewide network of Asian American advocates. So Sedwani's inclusion, her close and continued ties with the group Chirla, raise a lot of questions, okay? Chirla, like I said, immigrants, illegal aliens, by the way, who use Chirla, similar to ICE or in Illinois, which is the Illinois Coalition of Immigrant Rights or whatever, immigrant and refugee rights. They use taxpayer money, a lot of it. They use their money to provide legal services to illegal immigrants to try to keep them from being deported, okay? So this is raising a lot of questions about how independent this redistricting, these redistricting commissioners are going to be, and how they're chosen, and how that process looks. And, you know, the restrictions on who can participate in this citizen redistricting commission that Governor Gavin Newsom has kind of launched as part of his act. Like I said, last week, he launched it. It was the Election Rigging Response Act, okay? And this is being done in retaliation to Texas. So, you know, it's one thing to redistrict and to set up a bipartisan commission. It's a whole nother thing to like outright include people who are left-wing activists, who are part of this extremist group, Chirla. It raises a lot of questions about how independent these redistricting commissioners are chosen, and how independent really are they? And what are the restrictions on those who can participate? So undoubtedly, Chirla will be a part of Governor Gavin Newsom's efforts to negate the voice of Californians who have voted overwhelmingly on numerous occasions to keep politicians out of their business, out of the business of drawing districts. They don't want politicians. They don't want, like most people, this is like an 80/20 issue, not even, 1910, I would say. People want unbiased districting, okay? They don't want gerrymandering. They don't want these commissions full of left-wing activists or even right-wing activists gerrymandering their districts. I'm going to continue to monitor this group's activities, Chirla. I want to continue to monitor the California Citizens Redistricting Commission, see how exactly they retaliate against Texas. But you need to know how your taxpayer dollars are being spent, and who's backing these groups. George Soros, obviously backing these groups. Chirla, backed by taxpayer dollars, giving out cash cards, the Angelino cash cards, you know, they're backed by our philanthropic partners. This is not taxpayer dollars. Like, come on, they received $34 million of taxpayer dollars at least this year. So part of that money has got to be going to these Angelino cards. There are investigations into these groups, but I'm going to continue to monitor these groups. I do want to take a quick break. We're going to come back. I know that was a lot. I'm so glad that you stuck with me for it. It was so important, because you need to know who's on these redistricting commissions. And I can't believe that they're just being so blatant about this. The Sedwani woman is on the CA Citizen Redistricting Commission, but she used to be a part of this Chirla nonprofit organization, which is just wild. All right, I gotta take a quick break, but we're going to be back. Especially I like when you share this out with your friends. I'm Conservative Cat. Welcome to Conservative Cat Clips, where the claws come out and the truth lands hard. I'm your host, Cat. Today, we're pulling back the curtain on something that ought to make every Illinois taxpayer's blood boil. You're funding the abortion industry, and the abortion industry is very, very funded by the state of Illinois. So we're going to be zooming in on Illinois. What used to be the land of Lincoln is now the Midwest's abortion sanctuary. Under Governor JB Pritzker, Illinois has gone full throttle into becoming what he proudly calls the Beacon for Reproductive Rights Translation. Come one, come all, have your abortions here, and the taxpayers are going to pick up the tab. In 2019, Governor JB Pritzker signed the so-called Reproductive Health Act, making abortion, quote, "a fundamental right in Illinois." But that wasn't all. He also repealed the Parental Notification Act for minors getting abortions. So that means little Susie, if she's 12 years old, she doesn't need her parents' permission to go get an abortion. Your 13-year-old daughter can get an abortion in Illinois even without you knowing. While Illinois families are struggling with inflation, property taxes, and rising crime, guess where your tax dollars are going? The last few years, just tens of millions of dollars of Illinois taxpayer dollars have gone to Planned Parenthood in just a few years. Tens of millions of dollars. And they're not going to just fund the procedure itself. They're paying for out-of-state women to come here and abort their babies. It includes transportation, lodging costs, and logistical support, whatever the hell that means. I'm probably paying for some woman to get a McDonald's sandwich while she's here in the state. And literally, we're running a state-sponsored abortion tourism business. That's what we're doing here in the state. And let's not forget Planned Parenthood CEO salaries. Over $670,000 for Alexis McGill Johnson, regional directors. They make about like six figures, too. So your paycheck is shrinking, their paycheck is growing, and your roads have potholes, but Planned Parenthood thriving. Pritzker loves to pose as a champion for women, but let's be honest, this is about, this isn't even about ideology. It's about power and money. He's not protecting women. He's protecting Planned Parenthood's bottom line and all of these people raking in that CEO cash. And Illinois is now the abortion capital of the Midwest because he made it that way, Governor JB Pritzker. Illinois used to be about opportunity and family values. Now it's the go-to state for late-term abortion. Over 46,000 abortions in Illinois were done in 2022, or 2023 alone. 46,000 in Illinois alone. And many of you paid for that. And under Governor JB Pritzker, that number's just going to keep going up and up and up every single year. This has been Conservative Cat Clips. I'm Cat, reminding you that taxpayer-funded abortion is not compassionate, it's corruption. And all these people are making tons of money. And it's time we demand real leadership. It's time we step up and demand that they stop funding this madness. It's time we stand for life here in the state of Illinois. What do you think? Go ahead and smash that like button, share this out with your friends. Welcome back to the Conservative Catcher, the only show where common sense still has a microphone and where, unlike Springfield, we don't pay teenagers to play politician. Go ahead, support the channel by sending super chats. You can always send me stickers. Super thanks. You can do that on YouTube. You can also support the program by visiting patriotpumpenergy.com, buying your bottle of premium pre-workout today. Use promo code CONSERVATIVECAT for $10 off. It is an alternative energy drink, no artificial colors. And we don't try to get you hooked on sugar and caffeine, so we don't put exorbitant amounts in there. So there's no reason to get you hooked on those addictive substances. And there's clean energy in Patriot Pump Energy. So go ahead, buy your bottle today. Today's topic: Illinois lawmakers, in all of their wisdom, they decided that what the state really needs, what this broke, destroyed state really needs, we had a deficit the size of Lake Michigan. Of course, they address the deficit by raising your taxes. We've got schools turning out kids who can't read past the sixth grade level. We've got all of that, a really broken state. And they decided that what we needed, what we needed, was to hand out $500 scholarships per semester. So there's like two semesters in every year, so that's $1,000 per year, to student members sitting on higher education boards, okay? That's right. Illinois is literally paying kids to sit in meetings. No, they're not tutoring kids. No, they're not teaching math. No, they're not teaching first graders. Nope, nope, nope. They're sitting on boards, and they are politically connected students who serve on these higher education boards. That's the Illinois Community College Board and the Illinois Higher Education Board, okay? A big round of applause for your favorite state senator, not Dave Kayler. He's like the best. No, he's not. So he called this a modest scholarship, okay, as a way to show our appreciation. The state representative, Paul Jacobs, he's a Republican. He said that this is a waste. And let's be honest, folks, this is just another shiny distraction from, you know, what the state really needs to focus on, which is our energy bills going up. They can't even really keep our lights on, okay? And we need to focus on property taxes, our pension debt of $145 billion. This is a shiny distraction. And a lot of your Illinois Republicans will vote for shiny distractions. And it's really annoying. Some of them voted for, and I'll get to this eventually, maybe tomorrow I'll get to this. I'll have more on it. But there were these hypodermic needles. So this is crazy to me, and I've been kind of researching it and going down a rabbit hole, like in the early 2000s, they transitioned from, so I guess you can go into any pharmacy. So it doesn't matter if you're 18 to 25-year-olds, they can go into any pharmacy and get pretty much as many hypodermic needles as they want. These are needles that go under your skin. So yeah, people who use IVF, people who are diabetic, they need the needles, okay? But you used to have to provide a prescription for those types of needles. In the early 2000s, they changed that here in the state of Illinois, so you don't need a prescription anymore. So now they've changed the law even further and kind of like taken away some pharmacist discretion. There used to be like a degree of pharmacist discretion on who gets these needles. But now they've like even taken some of that discretion away. So it's like, okay, so literally anybody can go in and go get needles. And we all know what, you know, 18 to 25-year-olds and what people are going to be using the needles for, not even 18 to 25. People will go in, they'll get the needles for heroin, okay, to shoot up. Like, come on. I wasn't born yesterday. Like, we shouldn't be, we should be putting more parameters around getting these hypodermic needles, not less. Anyway, Republicans voted for that. So that brought me to this, is like, hey, your state legislators, Republican, Democrat, it really doesn't matter, they vote for these stupid little shiny distractions all the freaking time, and it's really annoying. And it's really starting to piss me off, because a lot of these, a lot of this stuff is like, why would you vote for that? Like, I think I read a bill that Governor JB Pritzker recently signed. They voted to take the apostrophe out of the department, like Veterans Affairs, you know, and there was an apostrophe in veterans, and they voted to take that out via a law, like a bill, when they drafted a bill to take out the apostrophe. Like, this is the crap they are doing on your time. Like, you know, I was just looking at Ryan Spain's compensation. Yeah, it's $166 per day via per diem, and then he's got like a $90,000, close to a $90,000 salary. Insanity. So buckle up. Today, we are diving into government race, waste, misplaced priorities, the devaluing of education, and why Illinois keeps trying to buy loyalty instead of teaching responsibility. So Senate Bill 1475, Dave Kayler put this out on his social media, and it sounded harmless, right? The $500 per semester. Now, I did the math on this. It's about like $3,000 per year, because you're going to have three people that this affects, which is just wild to me, because Dave Kayler created a bill that quite literally will only affect three people. So there's the Illinois Higher Education Board, there's the Illinois Community College Board, there's one person who sits, or one student who sits on the college board, there's two people who sit on the Illinois Higher Education, students who sit on the Higher Education Board. And it's like, you drafted a bill, dude, for like three people. Wow, you're really like helping a whole lot of people in that. Some of you might be thinking, Cat, you know, really, why are you getting all upset about $3,000? That's just peanuts in comparison to the 55-whatever-billion-dollar budget we have. True, true. It's not so much the amount that I'm pissed off about, it's the principle. Illinois just, the Illinois State Board of Education, they just voted to lower the proficiency standards of K through 12, okay? Because everybody keeps talking about how kids can't read at grade level, they can't do math at grade level. So what's their response, rather than teaching them basic math, reading, and, you know, writing, instead of teaching them? We said, eh, in order for them to get higher standards, and in order for them to actually reach the grade levels, we're going to lower the standards, okay? So instead of raising the standards, we're rewarding meteorocracy. Okay, so imagine being a parent. Your kid can't read at grade level, but hey, some politically connected 20-year-old is sitting in a boardroom, sitting in meetings occasionally. They probably don't even have to attend all the meetings in order to get the $500. The $500 per month, or per semester scholarship, and they just sit in a boardroom. Paul Jacobs, he nailed it. He pretty much said that, like, hey, the scholarship, like, it's kind of doing, like, the direct opposite of what the goal of sitting on these boards is supposed to be, which is that, hey, you're a self-starter, you don't need a check to step up, and you want to give back to your community. This was more of like a volunteer, volunteer service to sit on some of these boards and to talk about, you know, how to better higher education. That's what these boards do. Now, this isn't a reward anymore, it's bribery, essentially. Like, we're bribing these students to sit on the boards, and they're not even giving up their volunteer service and their hours anymore in their time in volunteerism. So it might even backfire on them, because a lot of times, if you sit on these boards, you can use it for higher education. So say you sit on the Illinois Community College Board, you can use it for getting into a good college, right? It's a resume patter for some of these students. But it might actually backfire on them, because, you know, say you apply to a college, you know, out of state, and they're like, oh, you served on this higher board, or Higher Education Board, the Illinois Community College Board, you applied here out of state to, I don't know, Florida State University. You know, you got paid to do this. I mean, this isn't really like, it doesn't show me anything. It doesn't show me that you're a self-starter. It doesn't show me that you're a volunteer. It just shows me that you took a paycheck, right? So, by the way, Kayler says that these students are incredibly valuable, and they do incredibly valuable work. So let me ask you, listeners and viewers, have you once seen a student representative on one of these higher education boards, if you've ever once seen them change tuition policy, fix a budget, improve campus safety? Like, come on, let's really call this what this is. Dave, okay, this is a resume patter, and students serve on these boards for resumes, okay? For either to get a job or a higher education, or a master's, or a doctoral program, right? This is a resume patter. Let's call it for what it is. These students aren't actually making a big, big difference on these boards. Oh, God forbid Cat say something like that. It's so controversial. I don't give a damn. Okay, let's step back and look at this through a biblical lens. Scripture tells us in Luke 6:10, "He who is faithful with little will be faithful with much." Serving on a board as a student is supposed to be a lesson of stewardship, okay? A chance to learn about leadership, responsibility, service, volunteerism. When you turn it into a paycheck, you're corrupting the very thing that it was meant to teach, okay, serving on this board. The Bible warns us, warns us in Proverbs 22:6, "Train up a child in the way he should go, and when he is old, he will not depart from it." Here in Illinois, instead of training children to serve for the sake of learning and, you know, expanding their opportunities via volunteerism, we're training them to expect a payment for everything they do, okay? Participation trophies have become participation paychecks, okay? Participation checks. So the lesson, what lesson do kids walk away with? That leadership is about what you get, not what you give, okay? It's supposed to be about what you give on this board, not about what you get. And it's really anti-biblical. This is what has led to the entitlement culture. This entitlement culture is now being codified into law via this, you know, $500 per semester scholarship, okay? So let's talk about the elephant in the classroom. Illinois schools are failing Illinois schools are failing. The State Board of Education literally just recently lowered the bar so kids can pass. Okay, lower the standards, fewer expectations. Meanwhile, less than 35%, 35% of students are proficient in math and reading in the state of Illinois. Illinois students, entire school districts, some of them, especially in the Chicago area, they have 0% of kids meeting great expectations. Zero, zero. So some districts have zero kids who can meet great expectations. So what do Democrats in Springfield do? What do they do? They, do they demand accountability? Do they demand that teachers actually teach the children? Do they fire these union leaders? These administrators, superintendents who are clearly failing their school districts if they don't even have one kid who's proficient at math or reading. You know, do they empower parents with school choice? No. They throw money at kids who are already doing very well, well enough to sit or to land a seat on a board. They throw more money at the politically connected students, right? And you know, it's kind of like watching your house burn down and then going out and buying a welcome mat. That's the way I look at this. You've got your house burning down, the classrooms are collapsing. The kids aren't able to read or write and do math at grade level. And then you're out there spending money on students who have done well enough to land themselves a board seat. It's like buying a welcome mat for a burning house. So here's the kicker, taxpayer bills, taxpayers are footing the bill of course. Kayler says, you know, this is small expense, small expense dude that adds up. Okay? This is why Illinois has some of the highest tax burdens in the country because of stupid little bills like this. And this is why families are fleeing to Missouri, Tennessee, Florida, Texas. Illinois is paying for kids to sit on boards and play politician while taxpayers are paying the price and they are keeping this broken system, this broken education system afloat. So let's play this out. Maybe next Illinois will start paying kids to take standardized tests. Hey, you know, you got to see on your standardized test, here's 50 bucks. Maybe next they're going to start paying kids to show up to class, right? Congratulations, you made it through the door. Here's your check. Maybe next they're going to start paying students to wait for it, graduate. Oh, wait, they already do. It's called debt forgiveness, college debt forgiveness. So they've already talked about paying kids who graduate. So here's a question for Senator Kayler. If this is really about valuing contributions, then where's the money for the parents who spend countless of unpaid hours tutoring their children outside of the classroom, volunteering in, you know, coaching sports, fundraising, running fundraisers, you know? Where, where's the money for the parents who do all of this outside extra work? When really the teachers should be teaching them. Okay, they've got to spend time teaching their students and tutoring their kids. Because the teachers are failing to do their work. They failed the child. Where's the $500 check for mom who tutors the kid after work because the school failed her child? Where's her $500 check there Senator Kayler? Don't hold your breath. Springfield, they're only going to pay the politically connected. They're going to pay the people who keep that political machine running. I'm sure these people who sit on, now I don't know them personally, but I'm sure that the kids, the students who sit on these boards are politically connected and they're going to keep the political machine humming. They'll probably graduate and turn into lobbyists or, you know, serve as staffers to Dave Kayler or, or whatever. Okay? Now let me remind you what real service looks like. Our founders didn't get paid to risk their lives and their fortunes at Independence Hall. Okay? George Washington turned down a salary actually as commander of the Continental Army. And they believed in sacrificing themselves. They believed in sacrifice for something greater than themselves. Okay, that's, that's what real sacrifice looks like. Now we flipped it. Service is no longer about sacrifice. They're supposed to serve on these boards. Okay? It's not supposed to be stipends. Okay, in compensation, leadership is no longer about character. It's about compensation. That's really sad. We've codified entitlement into our laws now with what Dave Kayler has passed. America first means teaching kids that education is about building character, not cashing in checks. Okay, and it means reminding young leaders that responsibility comes before reward. Okay, and if we keep lowering our standards, really bribing our students and bankrupting our taxpayers, Illinois won't just lose students, we're going to lose the future. Okay, we're going to come up with a bunch of entitled kids who don't know how to read, entitled students who don't know how to read or do math or, or write. Okay, literate entitled jack wagons. That's what we're going to wind up with. Okay? That's what Illinois has set us up for. So parents, what do you do? You demand higher standards in schools. Okay? We shouldn't be lowering our proficiency standards. We should be raising them. Don't let bureaucrats paper over failure by throwing money at meaningless programs. Yeah, so someone is making money off of these failed programs. Is it Dave? Yeah, most likely what's going to wind up happening. Now, I have no idea what the relationship is like. There are three kids, okay, that this program pertains to, by the way. One is on the Illinois Community College Board and two are on the Higher Education Board. I'd imagine that these kids are going to grow up, these students are going to graduate and perhaps become staffers or somehow benefit the political machine that is the Democrat Party. Okay? So parents, demand higher standards for your schools. Lawmakers, you need to stop spending and adding more of these stupid programs. They add more of these programs Bob, because they, of course, like you had said, they, who's benefiting from it, who's making money off of these failed programs? They're benefiting from these failed programs. Okay? So they don't mind spending the $500 per semester of taxpayer dollars because in the end it benefits the political machine. Illinois doesn't need more perks and privilege for, perks and privileges for student representatives. We need to have a complete reset on our priorities. We need to look at the basics, which is reading, math and writing. Churches, we need to remind our youth that leadership is about service, not self-interest. Okay? And we have totally gone away from what the true meaning of public service is. You know, it's not about a paycheck. It's not about how much can I get out of this? It's not about compensation. It is about actual sacrifice, what George Washington did in Independence Hall. Okay, we need to train a generation that seek wisdom and not wages. And wages from every opportunity. Okay, that's what really bothers me is like every opportunity they can, they think that they should be compensated for it, this entitled generation. And listeners, hold Springfield accountable. Call Kayler's office. Tell him that bribing kids to sit on meeting or sit in on meetings and sit on boards is not the solution when our schools can't even teach our kids how to read. Okay, like this is not a solution. Folks, Illinois doesn't have a money problem. We have a priority problem and the state keeps finding new ways to waste your money while lowering the bar for students. Senator Kayler, he says that this is a modest reward, reward. But this is really just another example of Illinois teaching entitlement over excellence. That's what this bill is really all about. It's entitlement versus excellence. Paul Jacobs is right. This law sends the wrong message at the wrong time. And the kids can't read, they can't do math, our math scores are in the gutter and families are being taxed to death. It is not the time to be providing stipends and handing out scholarships for kids to sit on higher education boards. It's time to return to the basics. All right, I'm going to take a quick break. Smash that like button, share this out with your friends. I'll be right back. We're going to be talking about these two former US cabinet members who are leaving the charge to stop Illinois politicians from drawing their own legislative districts. I'll be right back at that like button. Hey, smash that like button, share this out with your friends, subscribe to the channel. So today's headline, two former US cabinet members are leading the charge to stop Illinois politicians from drawing their own legislative districts. Notice how I'm saying legislative districts. This has nothing to do with congressional districts. Okay? They're calling it fair maps Illinois. The problem that they're trying to combat here is gerrymandering. These two former US cabinet members, who I will get to in just a second. So gerrymandering, we know, is the political art of slicing and dicing your neighborhoods. So that way power hungry politicians get to pick their voters instead of voters picking their politicians. Okay, so and Illinois, my friends, we know is the gold standard for, is the gold standard of corruption. If gerrymandering were an Olympic sport, Illinois would be getting the gold, silver and the bronze every four years. So let's go back to 2021, Governor JB Pritzker signed into law a map that received an F grade, yes, an F grade from the Princeton Gerrymandering Project. Common cause, these are not like partisan organizations, conservative organizations. These are typically academics, academic, left wing Ivy League type folks who are saying, hey, Illinois, your maps are trash. Okay? That's, those are the types of people who are saying, hey, Illinois, you have a gerrymandering problem. Okay? So it's not just Kat saying we have a gerrymandering problem. So let's pause here. Isn't this rich? Because the same Democrats who whined about Texas Republicans redrawing their congressional districts, even fleeing the state of Texas to avoid voting, they run to Illinois, the sanctuary state for crooked maps. Really, this is a sanctuary state, not for just illegal immigrants, but for crooked maps as well. They didn't come here for the pizza, okay, or the deep dish in Chicago. They came here for cover because Illinois has made voter manipulation in art form, gerrymandering in art form. They are very good at it and I just think it's very rich that you had the Texas Democrats come up here who were whining, they came up here, they sought refuge here. It's kind of ironic. They're complaining about gerrymandering in Texas. The Texas Republicans redistricting and then they came up here to the state of Illinois. Okay? So that's what this is kind of all about. Now you have the former Transportation Secretary Ray LaHood, a Republican. He and I will get to Bill Daley here. These are the two. He's the former Commerce Secretary, former Obama Chief of Staff, by the way, son of the Daley dynasty of Chicago politics. This is really creepy that they have teamed up together. Now, LaHood, they like kind of gave a press conference about this, their new initiative. This is called Fair Maps Illinois. Okay? This is their initiative launched by these two former US cabinet members. Ray LaHood, he talked about Ryan Spain. This is fascinating. Ryan Spain kind of Peoria, he's a well-liked representative, establishment type guy. He was drawn out of his district. Okay, and he said, he, he talked about this and he gave like an example of Ryan Spain being drawn out of district. And I get it, you know, you walk into your polling place, you want to vote for your neighbor. You want to vote for the guy you know, you trust, who campaigned, who coaches on your little league, or coaches your son's little league. You want to vote for that guy and poof, he vanishes off the ballot. And you know, it's because a bunch of map makers scrubbed him out of his district. Okay, Ryan Spain. Now, that's not representation, that's eviction. And it's the political machine telling the people of Peoria here, now that they carved out Ryan Spain out of his district. And they, they've done this in the past where they carve him out of his district and then he has to rerun and it's a harder district for him to win. And they put in more Democrats and it's harder for him to win as a Republican. They scrubbed him out of that district. It's kind of like telling the people of Peoria like, hey, we're going to decide who your rep is, not you, when you gerrymander. Okay? And friends, this should outrage you as a Christian, as a conservative, because, and as a liberty loving Illinoisan, because the power, if it's concentrated in the hands of the few, liberty shrinks. Okay, so power, when it's concentrated in the hands of you, liberty shrinks. And when liberty shrinks, tyranny grows and we should be against it as Christians and as conservatives and as liberty loving people. Right? Now I want to talk about the people who are pushing this. He's not wrong. LaHood, when he talks about Ryan Spain being carved out of his district, that happens to even the establishment folks, particularly if they don't go along to get along with Democrats, they will see it play out in the future in their legislative districts as a tactic of like, hey, you better play along with the Democrats, the super majority, or next go around, we're going to make it harder for you to win your election. Okay? So I want to talk about who's pushing this reform because it's so fascinating to me. Bill Daley, former Commerce Secretary and former Obama Chief of Staff, okay? And the son of the Daley dynasty of Chicago politics and then Ray LaHood, a Republican. Former Congressman, okay, and father of Darren LaHood, by the way, and Transportation Secretary under Barack Obama. Okay, so I know what you're thinking, Kat, this is really weird, Daley and LaHood. They're, one, it's a Republican and a Democrat teaming up, which is odd, but it's even, I mean, I've seen some strange things, but this is really weird. And I don't, I haven't been able to wrap my thoughts completely around this yet and what exactly they're doing. I have some guesses and some speculation. We want to get rid of the corruption. Okay, we want to get rid of gerrymandering. I want to get rid of gerrymandering as much as the next guy. You do too. This is like an 80/20 issue. People want fair maps, people want fair districting. They don't want the gerrymandering. Okay? And this is like a bipartisan, or like a nonpartisan issue. Okay, pretty much. So it really concerns me when you have these two guys teaming up. I would really like to see a grassroots effort or grassroots movement kind of leading this effort and creating a fair maps initiative. Okay? Now, being that LaHood and Bill Daley are leading this effort, it kind of leads me to believe that they are starting to freak out about the grassroots opponents that some of these establishment folks. I don't think Ryan Spain has a primary opponent yet. However, I know Toni McComme does and she is the Minority House spokesperson or House Leader, okay? Minority House Leader. And this is interesting. I'm going to read a bit from Illinois. This was in Article Dunn back in March. Conservative activist attorney and former candidate for Attorney General says he's launching a PAC aimed at primaring House Republican leader Toni McComme. She's a Republican and the top member of her leadership team. And another Republican member of the House, longtime Republican member of the House. So there is a PAC that has been launched by Tom DeVore. Okay, and he kind of rose to fame. If you guys don't know who Tom DeVore is, he rose to fame during the 2020 pandemic because he was fighting Governor JB Pritzker's mask executive orders and COVID executive orders. And he's now a noted critic of McComme and top GOP officials in the state for the votes that have taken place. And I told you, I actually was just reading, the other day we talked about the mental health screenings, the mandatory mental health screenings. In the Illinois Senate, every single Republican voted for it. Not one, or not one Republican voted against the mandatory mental health screenings. And those are nasty, okay, where they are going to be asking very sensitive questions to your children without really your consent. And you have to jump through hoops to opt out of them or opt your children out of that, that mental health counseling performed in public schools. Every Illinois Republican Senator voted for that measure. A lot of them voted for the homeschooling bill as well, which regulated homeschooling and pretty much made homeschooling educators bad guys, okay, and policed homeschoolers. You know, and that was a Democrat bill, Tara Costa Howard, she introduced that and a lot of Republicans were for that. And I've told you multiple times, there's Republicans put things out there all the time that are, it's just gay bills a lot of the time. And by gay bills, I mean like they're just kind of flashy distractions. But on the rare occasion, you will get Republicans voting for things that really take a toll on Illinoisans. For example, the homeschooling bill, you had Republicans vote for that, but you also had Republicans vote for the mandatory health screenings. Okay, um, so he has been a notable critic, Tom DeVore, of Toni McComme and top GOP officials in the state for votes that they've taken and for campaign for campaign contributions that they've received, primarily from the Illinois Education Association, or the Teachers Union, the, another one, Illinois Federation of Teachers. A lot of Republicans take that kind of money establishment. And DeVeau says he's forming a political committee, action committee called Rhino Removal PAC. Now Rhino, we know what that means. It means Republicans in name only. And Tom DeVeau says he's working, and was working on, primary challengers against McComme, her deputy Republican leader, Noreen Hammond, and Charlie Meyer. Okay, so these are some Rhinos that DeVeau's been really critical of. Now, there is, in fact, a primary challenger for Toni McComme, and I'll get to that here in just a second, but here's what Tom DeVeau said in Illinois. A suppressed and depressed Republican electorate is the biggest problem we have in Illinois right now. There are many things that contributed that. It's not a one size fit all solution. So gerrymandering, I think, would be one of those things that contribute to a depressed and suppressed Republican electorate. Okay, there's a couple of things that contributed to that, but that is the perception from the electorate and the elected officials have right now. Do not take the fight to Democrats, okay? So another reason, though, why, so the gerrymandering, but also another reason why is because the Republicans we currently have in office do not take the fight to Democrats, and they tend to vote with the Democrats on multiple bills, for example, the homeschooling bill, and the mental health screening bill, okay? They take Democrat money, they vote for Democrat bills, and they spend their time more concerned about maintaining their positions than they do about defeating and beating Democrats. Okay, so with Republicans already in the super minority and defending some of their 40 seats again in 2026, DeVeau says he's not concerned about hurting the GOP long term. I'm talking to, with you about this Illinois piece that is out there, getting out the super minority is exactly what I want to do, what I'm doing. There's only one way to get out the super minority, and that's to win elections against the Democrats. The only way we win elections against Democrats is to excite and invigorate the Republican electorate, to vote more consistently and vote more often and greater numbers. And that's the only way we win elections. So for example, I've told you guys multiple times that I've voted for Republicans, and they turn around and take pictures with, like, the Logan County Pride Coalition, okay, I'm in Logan County. Then they take pictures with the gay pride people, or they vote for things like the mental health screenings, they vote for gay things like the hypodermic needles, and, you know, taking away the discretion of pharmacists, and whether or not they should give out hypodermic needles, and who they can give out, you know, needles to. Just really stupid things that Republicans vote for, and it really discourages me from voting for them, because every single time I vote for a Republican, I wind up like having to put my foot in my mouth, because they vote for things that are just, are completely gay. Okay, so, fast forward to July, we've got Toni McComme, she has a primary challenger. Please meet this Miss Victoria Anorado, okay? So you can read more about her. She, 25 years in law enforcement, she's committed to not taking Democrat money, and she has committed to not voting on progressive bills. Victoria ran against Tony in 2022, and didn't do too bad, considering, all things considered, being that Tony has like the backing of teachers unions and a bunch of money. 3,000 more votes this time, and Tony will be gone. So if she gets 3,000 more votes, Victoria, this go around, she will be gone. Tony, the Facebook page is going to be set up for Victoria here soon, and Tony and her Democrat supporters will be out in full force, will be outed in full force, I think, with this Facebook page going up, and I'm sure that Victoria is going to need your help in taking the head off of the snake. Okay, so Toni McComme, what you would consider a Rhino establishment type person in the State House, okay, facing a primary challenger. This is huge. So this brings me back to the story, if you guys forgot, about Bill Daley and Ray LaHood setting up this fair maps thing. Okay, so this fair maps thing, that this initiative that they have launched, is not about the congressional districts, which is kind of what's under threat right now, because Governor JB Pritzker, along with Gavin Newsom, like we talked about earlier, they've been talking about redistricting in retaliation to what Texas is doing with their congressional maps, okay? They want to add five congressional seats, and what they want to do is take away Republican seats in California, which they don't have a whole lot of, and Illinois, we only have three of, so, like, they don't have any more wiggle room, I guess, these blue states, to retaliate, because they've already gerrymandered the hell out of these states, there's no wiggle room. So there's a ton of wiggle room in states like Texas, where they can add five Republican seats, and similar to Florida, they could add five, six, seven Republican seats. In blue states, they can like maybe take away a few Republican seats, and add a couple of different seats, but that's it. So they don't have a whole lot of, like, they don't have bullets in their gun, okay? Now, Bill Daley, he says that this is a chance for people of Illinois to finally get a chance to tell the system that they want something different. This is interesting coming from Bill Daley, being that he is the system, like quite literally the Daley dynasty of Chicago politics, like, he is the system. So it's fascinating that he's saying this. He's acting like he's grassroots, but we know he's not. I think that they're doing this, really, and here's my speculation, they're doing this because the establishment is getting challenged, in this specific case with Toni McComme, but this has been going on for a couple of years. Like I said, in 2022, there was even Democrats who were challenging longstanding Democrats, like Patrick Joyce, in his district, the 40th District, he was challenged in a primary by somebody, okay? And more and more grassroots people are beginning to show up and primary these establishment type folks in the Democrat Party and the Republican Party alike, which is why I think that there's unholy type alliance has been made between Ray LaHood and Bill Daley. I think that they're trying to, and this is all legislative maps, so they're not even touching the congressional maps. So I think they're freaking out about the State House, and the grassroots rising up and taking the State House back. So here's where it gets tricky. Illinois's Constitution only allows for certain kinds of amendments to be brought to referendum, okay? They have to be about structure or procedure of the legislative, of the legislature itself. And that means you can't touch the congressional maps, only the legislative ones via referendum. Why is this? Because the Supreme Court, and I'm going to say it again, the Supreme Court, the Illinois Supreme Court, okay, they struck down previous attempts to reform, at reform in 2016, so gerrymandering reform in 2016 on procedural grounds, translation. Even if you gather enough signatures, even if you get the votes, the political class, they have a giant guard dog sitting at the gate, the courts. And let me remind you, the Illinois courts are no more neutral than the maps themselves. They are very biased, millions in campaign contributions to sitting Illinois Supreme Court justices from Governor JB Pritzker himself, okay? They are stocked with judges who came up through the Democrat machine, and came up through the Democrat machine and voted on those maps and drew those maps themselves. Okay, so it's kind of tricky, because they can't really touch the congressional maps right now via referendum. They can only touch the state legislative maps, which is why they say they can only touch legislative maps, Bill Daley and Ray LaHood, although the congressional maps are what the problem is. So what needs to happen at a state legislature level, they should be able to do this, where they redesign the drawing process, and take the human element out of it completely. I don't know why we haven't done that yet. So they should be able to do that at a legislature, or legislative level, not a referendum level, because like I said, the kind of amendments brought by referendum, because the Illinois Supreme Court ruling in 2016, you can only bring about referendums that are about structure and procedure, and you can't really touch the congressional maps because the 2016 ruling, okay? I know that's kind of complicated. So the Fair Maps Initiative that Ray LaHood and Bill Daley are proposing, they want a commission, a commission. So no use of political party or voting history when drawing the lines, okay? So, you know, say Peoria has a voting history of voting blue, you can't use their voting history when drawing the lines, you can't use political parties when drawing lines, it's supposed to be a bipartisan commission, right? And that's what this Fair Maps Illinois initiative is all about, this commission. The maps have to be drawn in respect to municipal boundaries, they have to be compact, so like, almost like a grid. And this is interesting, they say that it has to protect minority representation. Bill Daley and Ray LaHood, believe me, the minorities have plenty of, in fact, I would say that the rural white voters have been drawn out of any kind of representation at all. They have plenty of representation, I would say, that minority communities in Illinois, okay? In fact, they have way more, and the rural voters, the rural white communities in Southern Illinois, have been drawn out completely, and they don't have any representation at all. So, you know, it sounds reasonable, the commission. I'm skeptical of it, because, come on, this is Ray LaHood and Daley, Bill Daley, who are spearheading this, is, oh, I have concerns, and I have a feeling that they're creating this commission. And is this commission really going to be bipartisan? Are they really going to try to make it a grid and keep out the voting history and the use of political parties? Or are they freaking out because some of the Republican establishment and some of the Democrats are being challenged via primaries now, because the grassroots is getting really excited here in the state of Illinois? And perhaps this commission is an idea, this commission is a front, okay, to dissuade any kind of attempts from the grassroots to organize and attack the maps via referendum, or to dissuade, you know, initiatives to try to protect the congressional maps or the congressional representation. They're going to come out with this idea first, to try to get ahead of the grassroots. So the Bible tells us in 11 Proverbs, or chapter 11, verse 1, "A false balance is an abomination to the Lord, but a just way is to His delight." What is gerrymandering? It is a false balance. They are tipping the scales, it's election fraud, without stuffing the ballot box. And here's the kicker, this commission is not touching the congressional maps. Okay, so Illinois politicians are free to gerrymander these Washington districts, these federal districts, and that's kind of what's my biggest concern is, because Governor JB Pritzker has already talked about retaliation, much like Governor Gavin Newsom, when it comes to these Washington districts. So these politicians can very much gerrymander those districts, and then they can kind of pretend with this commission that they're fixing the legislative part of it, the Springfield part of it. And I don't necessarily know how honest this commission is going to be, being that it's spearheaded by Ray LaHood and Bill Daley. Okay, both Obama cabinet members, okay? So our congressional maps are really the ones that might be touched here soon. There's only three Republican seats that are left, and they might be on the chopping block, considering what Texas has done, and Governor JB Pritzker might touch them out of retaliation. And really, I think that they're talking about the legislative districts now, like I said, because some of these Rhino establishment people are, like Toni McComme are being primaried. And that usually doesn't happen, and now they're freaking out. And now they want to, you know, kind of draw these districts perhaps, in favor of these establishment type folks, you know, where does Toni McComme pull well? You know, let's make sure that this district is secure for her, you know, and her primary challenger, or any primary challenger would never be able to unseat her, because we've added, you know, her hometown, or we've added this, this town here, where she has pulled very well. What if the commission does that? So, let's not be naive. Illinois was built on rigged systems. George Ryan, selling licenses, CDLs for bribes, Rod Blagojevich trying to sell Senate seat, Mike Madigan, longest serving House Speaker in American history, running Springfield like his own personal, like, little kingdom, okay? The maps are just another cog in this same corrupt wheel. And I tell you, until we drain the swamp, so that's really how we're going to fix this, is draining the swamp, challenging your establishment people like Toni McComme, getting those people out of there. That's the only way that we're going to fix Illinois. And, you know, until then, Illinois is going to remain what it is today, a warning to the rest of the nation, a warning about what happens when politicians put themselves above the people. So really, what needs to happen is we need to win those elections. And Tom DeVeau's idea of primarying some of these people, Democrats and Republicans alike, so if there's a Democrat, you know, and a lot of these Democrats have been challenged recently, in the Chicago districts as well. I think LaShawn Ford, he had a primary challenger recently, and, you know, he's been around for eons, since I've probably been alive. And he had a primary challenger, and he's in the Chicago districts. A lot of people in Chicago are really starting to get pissed off about the education situation, because schools are so bad. And now people are getting pissed off enough to where they're starting to run. So there's been, like, people have run against really establishment type people, on the Republican side and Democrat side. So here's where you come in. I think that grassroots, the grassroots initiative, there might be a grassroots initiative that mirrors the Fair Maps Illinois initiative. Now, the Fair Maps Illinois initiative by Ray LaHood and Bill Daley, they need 320,000 valid signatures in order to get this question on the ballot, right? That pertains to the legislative districting. I wouldn't, I wouldn't sign up for it, I'm sorry. I would just wait until there's a grassroots effort to address the gerrymandering. And what really needs to happen is we need to focus on winning some of these seats from the establishment, from the Rhinos, okay? And once we win, then we will have a say in, the people will have a say in the way we redistrict. So my suggestion, wait for a grassroots initiative, a similar grassroots initiative. Don't sign on to this thing that's spearheaded by the Rhino and by Obama staffers, okay, Ray LaHood and Bill Daley. I wouldn't sign on to the initiative, or try to get this on to the ballot. And the question is here, will the people of Illinois finally rise up and say, no more rigged maps? And the way of going about that might be like a grassroots initiative, similar to the Illinois Fair Maps Initiative, or it's just winning some of these seats, and challenging some of these people who've been there a while. So it's not just about lines on a map, this is about whether the government belongs to the people or to the politicians. And gerrymandering is theft, it's theft of choice, it's theft of accountability, and it's theft of democracy itself. And Illinois has a chance, a very slim chance, but a chance, and it's not going to come easy, to do something righteous, and that is to win these seats, and to take back our redistricting. And I'm not even saying, you know, Republicans take back the state legislature, I'm saying like grassroots candidates, Democrat, Republican, you know, and you can be a Democrat. I know Democrats who, you know, challenged establishment Democrats in Chicago, and they're apolitical a lot of the times, and a lot of times they're mothers, who run because they don't like what's going on in our education system. They don't like what's going on as far as the fentanyl crisis, and a lot of these moms are running because they don't like what's going on. And they're usually just apolitical. I wouldn't even be against that. We just need to get rid of this establishment who's been there for a while. And I don't think that this is going to come easy. Power, you know, of course, never surrenders without a fight. They've been fighting primary challengers for a while. They gave the Illinois Democrat Party and the Illinois GOP more power in that they can contribute a unlimited amount to primary candidates, okay? They used to do it for general, but now they can do it in the primaries. Through an election omnibus bill, they did that, and they've been going Um, through an election omnibus bill, they did that and they've been going after slated candidates and all of that. So they've been doing everything they can to fight, power never surrenders without a fight. The machine is going to claw, scratch and litigate and delay. Uh, they're going to challenge these primary challengers in courts, they're going to challenge their signatures. So there is going to be an uphill battle. Uh, that's why truth tellers like us uh, keep speaking, speaking like you. Uh, we have to keep speaking and that's why citizens have to stay awake and you know, the price of liberty, as Jefferson said, is eternal vigilance. So you have to stay vigilant and you have to get as many signatures as you possibly can. So that way if the establishment Rhino uh, challenges you signatures, you won't get knocked off the ballot because you have an exceeded amount. You have to stay vigilant. Um, and remember friends, we serve God who sees all lines. All the lines, all the gerrymandering, he's, he's the judge uh, with perfect justice. And politicians can redraw the maps all they want, but in the end, they can't redraw the truth and God sees all. Um, so let me get to some of your comments before I leave for today. People do not pay attention to primaries, this is why we have the state we do. Yes, exactly. Um, you're exactly right. I've noticed most of these feel-good bills are brought forth by Democrat women. Yeah, and I think just maybe uh, they should not be in office, but at home taking care of their own families. Yeah, I've brought this up before where the feminization and it's not even Republican or Democrat women, it's Republican women as well. Um, there's this feminization, um, you know how feminine Nazis will say down with patriarchy? No, I'm for the patriarchy. So really what the patriarchy is, a lot of people don't even really know. Uh, really, this is just the idea that uh, men or masculinity should be the governing body. Okay, and it doesn't necessarily have to be all men, that you don't have women elected leaders, although um, I have strong feelings about that. I don't think that women should be elected leaders. Cause I think it's kind of inevitable. Um, there are so very few women uh, out there who um, govern like a man. Uh, and it's very hard for women to separate their biology from uh, their, their governing, okay? Um, just naturally, you know, you want to fix everybody's problems, you know, this is just a motherly type uh, instinct that women tend to have, Democrat women and Republican women. So that's why they draft bills. And I would say even men, uh, femme men, um, Dave Kaler comes to mind and I'm not, you know, calling him a woman, right? Uh, it's just a femme type ideology, a feminist ideology when it comes to governance. Uh, you know, the $500 per semester for these three kids. Like one, why would you create a bill for three people? Um, you're supposed to be governing uh, the state of Illinois, right? Why, why would you craft a bill that only pertains to like a few people, uh, the very few representing the very, very few, three people? Um, and you know, it's kind of like a mom, right? You would think uh, a mom would say, well, you know, my kid, he serves on the, you know, this board and he dedicates a lot of time for it. And you know, I want him to be rewarded for that. And it's this very feminized approach to governance. Uh, so there's men who do it too, they bring forward these feel-good bills. And uh, here's how they stay elected, that's, and a lot of Republicans do this too, because that's how they stay elected. Because they know that a lot of female, a lot of the voters are females. Uh, that's why Governor JB Pritzker is the way he is. Uh, about the reproductive rights and abortion and things like that, and that's why he's so hell-bent on these issues. It's because he knows that the majority of the electorate is women. Uh, they show up to vote, right? So a lot of Republican women or Democrat women, I would say femme men, uh, Republican and Democrat alike. They introduce these feel-good bills, uh, bills that are just gay. They introduce these to stay elected, uh, so they can write a fluffy press release and say like, look what I did. Uh, so for example, Dave Kaler, you know, me being a mom, right? And you know, a parent uh, of a child who's going through college right now, uh, you know, that's going to resonate with a lot of his voters. Uh, particularly mothers, um, you know, who send their kids off to college and don't want them to struggle for travel expenses or, or food or anything like that and they want them to be taken care of. Um, you know, and they want them to be provided for. Um, and that's just a very like feminized approach to governance. Uh, so this is a feel-good bill that he can take back education, right? Oh, it's for the kids, it's for educating, it's all about feelings. And he remains elected and continues to keep his vote or his power uh, because he does these feel-good bills, right? Women govern with feelings, not logic. Um, they cannot even agree on third E L L, yeah. Uh, it's, I mean, I, coming from a woman, it's very hard to separate yourself from uh, your biology and like uh, your day-to-day tasks, okay? I don't think I'd be able to serve in government and separate and I am very well aware of my emotions. And I try not to let them get the best of me when I'm, you know, trying to do a job. Uh, but it's hard, right? Because it's your biology, it's in your nature, like quite literally the definition of your biology. It's in your nature to uh, be compassionate and more of a nurturing type figure. And they just want to nurture everybody and that's not how you're supposed to govern. Uh, so the patriarchy is this idea that you take a more masculine in the, or masculine approach to governance and it's not about nurturing uh, rather than, you know, protection. Uh, that is what the government is really supposed to do, it's supposed to, uh, it's all about national security and public safety. And it's about basic infrastructure, okay? And if you think about the male role in the household, what do they do, right? They don't do the nurturing or the ins and outs of making sure the child is fed or anything like that. They provide uh, a basic infrastructure and the basic necessities. And they provide protection, that is the traditional role of the male in the household and like family unit. Um, and that is what, you know, our view as conservatives, um, being that we understand that that is a uh, the, 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 the roles in the home, we also think that that should be the roles of government as well. Um, so women actually, um, before they got the right to vote, uh, there were a lot of women who were against that, uh, because you have way more sway as a woman not voting, uh, not being an elected official, uh, and being kind of a more behind-the-scenes person. Um, you have way more sway and um, a lot of females were against the uh, women's right to vote movement. Um, and yeah, it, it's just a complete corruption of our governing bodies. Um, so maybe one day I'll do an entire show on that. I could go down these rabbit holes all day with you. But yeah, there's just this feminization in governance overall. Uh, and it needs to stop and they govern with their feelings, not logic. And they come up with these feel-good bills to stay elected. And that's why a lot of these uh, politicians, I would say even men and women, um, because it's just the feminization of governance. Uh, they introduce these femme bills, uh, these feel-good bills to stay elected. And we shouldn't be in the business of staying elected, uh, but rather, you know, serving the people. It's not for us, it's for them. And we should have that ideology when, or that perspective when we're governing and when we're serving in public office. All right, you guys have a great rest of your day. Bye-bye. Love you so much. Smash that like button, share this out with your friends and subscribe to the channel. We'll be back tomorrow.